Good evening. Welcome to Lindbergh Schools Board of Education meeting number 1517 is now called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, my man.
Second by Mike Tischlitz. We'll do a roll call vote as we do for every item while we're having Zoom meetings here. So the roll call, Mike Shing, yes, Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristy Watts?
Yes.
Senator Millman?
Yes.
Dr. Mike Tischlitz?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, vote passes seven oh. At this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So those who are able, please stand. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just to remind everybody, in order to meet the county guidelines, we are still meeting in a social distance environment with cabinet and board members only present in order to reduce the threat of COVID-19. The meeting is also being conducted using Zoom and streaming online via the district's YouTube channel. The plan for October is to go back to in-person meetings and allow the community back into our board meetings. We're not exactly sure where the meeting will be held, so stay tuned for that information. But the plan brought up again is to recommence in-person meetings for the meeting. So we'll go to item 4.0, which is special recognition, and this month is Sperring Middle School. So I'll hand it off to Dr. Boger now.
All right, good evening. Yes, I'm Lauren Boger, the principal at Sperring Middle School. You know, about three years ago, when I interviewed for this principal position, I was asked how we might celebrate our students. And although I did not anticipate a Zoom celebration, I do remember saying, we'll always find a way to celebrate excellence. And we're going to do that here tonight. The first person I would like to recognize is Sperring's Teacher of the Year. His name is Bill Murphy. And Bill Murphy is now, he's an assistant principal. He's no longer with us here in Lindbergh. But when he was, he did amazing things for us. Bill is one of those people who just goes above and beyond things creatively. He was a math teacher and a science teacher here with us, led our tech club, and did an amazing job in leadership with our design time and our CubeStat rocket project. So Bill, if you are here, I saw you on the Zoom. Do you have anyone with you tonight, Bill, if you'd like to say a few words?
I am in between carpooling kids to soccer and gymnastics. So I'm in my mobile office. But as an extra special treat tonight, sitting here at soccer, I saw three former students that I just had last year just come across right before the meeting. So what providence for that to happen, you know, on a night like tonight. So just made it even more special to see some of my more Lindbergh family. So, you know, wouldn't be where I am today without you guys and your leadership and the opportunities that you offer me. And it's definitely a big part of my life. And there'll be a little green and gold in this blood for a long time to come. So just very, very honored, very, very honored and thankful to be part of that family.
Thank you, Bill. And we were able to surprise Bill with his family in the spring with some signs and posters. And they did a great job. And Bill, something someone said to me once is, even though you're in another district, the mission is still the same. We take care of kids together. So congratulations again on being our Sperring Teacher of the Year. All right, the next person I would like to recognize is our Support Staff of the Year, Mr. George Noble. George brings energy, happiness, and cheer everywhere he goes at Sperring Middle School. And if you have ever heard George on a walkie-talkie, he is sure to make you smile. You could be having the worst day, and you hear George come across that walkie-talkie, and you just grin ear to ear. George, are you here with us tonight? George, you can unmute and say hello.
Tony, can you unmute him? There you go. George, you're there.
Hi, George. We also surprised George this year. George, who do you have with us tonight?
My niece Kimberly, she's working the control panel here.
Well, hey, George, how many years have you been at Sperring now?
Since 2011. I came over in 2011 full-time. But I was at Sperring before that for half a year or whatever in 2008, when they remodeled and did the reconstruction on Sappington School. I was assigned to Sappington. And in 2008, they were doing a lot of remodeling. So I spent half the school year at Sperring, and then I came back full-time at Sperring in 2011.
George, what's your favorite part of coming to Sperring every day?
What's my favorite part about coming to Sperring every day? I don't know. I guess seeing the kids. You gotta like kids, or you're not going to do your job. I mean, I think my favorite part is just enjoying the kids.
And we enjoy having you here with us, and your happiness and cheer is so appreciated. Congratulations on being Sperring Support Staff of the Year, George Noble.
Well, thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right. And the next two members that I would like to recognize are our outstanding eighth graders. So this has become a tradition for us to recognize two students at a board meeting like this. And we have gone with eighth graders. And we go to the staff administrators and counselors to ask them about who demonstrates our take-flight mindset on a daily basis. And without hesitation, the names that came to the forefront tonight, our first name is Ella Malavolti. Ella, are you here with us tonight?
Ah, that's cute.
I'm here, yes.
Ella. I hear you, Ella. Are you with us?
Yeah.
Congratulations, Ella. What's been your favorite part of Sperring Middle School thus far?
My friends, like having friends with me.
Friends? And how are you doing with your virtual learning experiences?
It's good.
Good. Well, we miss seeing you here in person, but we're hearing great things about your leadership. Congratulations on being an outstanding eighth grader with us. And then our last honoree this evening is another outstanding eighth grader, Avery Sangupta. Avery, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here.
Congratulations, Avery. What's been a highlight of middle school for you thus far?
Probably just hanging out with my friends and getting to work with them, like on projects.
Awesome. How's that new iPad treating you?
Pretty good. Sometimes it doesn't work.
Okay. Heard today a little bit, yeah? Okay, well, congratulations, Avery, on being an outstanding eighth grader with us. We were able to surprise both students as well with their parents, and I think they're with them as well this evening. Hello, hello, mom, dad are here. And thank you all again. It is an important year for Sperring. If you guys didn't know, it is the 50th year that Sperring has opened its doors for middle school learning. So it's a memorable year. You all will be remembered for all of your service to us. And congratulations to tonight's recipients for Sperring.
Thank you, Lauren. So Bill, George, Avery, and Ella, we have, usually we would hand these to you at a board meeting. We have some spiritware for you as well. Ella and Avery, we have a certificate for you. And George, I think we have a $25, and Bill, a $25 gift certificate. Just, Bill, we'll let you go ahead and buy it, because you said you're always going to have a green and gold blood in your veins. So we'll let you go ahead and keep getting some Lindbergh spiritware. So Avery and Ella, I get to see George quite regularly over at Sperring. I can't wait to see you guys back in the building, hopefully sometime here in the near future. So keep up all the hard work. And mom and dads, if you're in there listening to us, thank you for all your support and everything you're doing at home to support our kids through this time. So thank you, guys. And at that, you guys are free to go unless you want to stay on for the rest of the meeting. You can tune in to watch the rest of the meeting on YouTube. So thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for all your support.
All right, thanks, guys. Congratulations again. So move forward with the meeting here. Agenda 5.0, we have no items for resolutions. 6.0, citizen comments regarding agenda items. Again, if we're not able to be present with our citizens in our meeting, noted on board docs, we will be taking comments via email to boe@limberghschools.ws. And so any comments forwarded to that address will be entered in writing after this meeting takes place. So again, we hope to be back in person in October. That's the plan. So we will then take citizen comments at that time. 7.0 communications, calendar events. Mr. Secretary, can you do the calendar events?
Yes. So there are a lot of things coming up within the month of September. Parent-teacher conferences will be happening, most likely via Zoom. Elementary starts in September, September 10. And then middle school and high school will be towards the end of the month and into October as well. There will be some board advisory committee meetings, one on September 22. Or there's a, sorry, there's a board advisory committee meeting on September 17, student life. And then on September 21, the technology advisory committee will be meeting. On September 22, we will be having our Board of Education meeting for the tax rate hearing. And then we'll be back here again in October, on October 13, for a workshop and our regular scheduled meeting.
All right, thank you very much. 7.2, the reported meetings. This is where board members report on any state parent group or other meetings that they attended, either virtually or in person. So at this time, does anybody have any highlights that they would like to share?
Attended the leadership.
Attended the leadership briefing. I think there was a few others here. And it was just nice to see all the faces. There was a lot of people in attendance. So it was good to see the leaders, you know, showing up and engaging.
Very well. I know that meetings have been a little sparse, but, okay. 7.03, no announcements. 7.04, review of the upcoming Board of Education agenda.
Yeah, so again, like I said before, we're meeting on September 22 for the tax rate hearing. We'll be voting on that on the 22nd. And then on October 13 is our regular scheduled meeting. Before that meeting, we'll have a workshop. The agenda is to be set at a later date. But at our Board of Education meeting, we'll have our first reading of the Early Childhood Education, Parents as Teachers Program Evaluation, and our first reading of Professional Learning Program Evaluation.
All right, I will move down to 7.06. Meetings. So we'll start with Joelle, Finance today.
Yes, we met last Thursday. It's always a Thursday prior to the Tuesday board meeting. It's the first time we're rotating our membership committee members. So we have three new committee members. So pretty much this meeting, we went over some of the basics about how to access finance information on the webpage. And then we did get a little bit into budgeting and where we're at with some of the CARES money. The rest of the information was reviewed, what's on the board packet for your approval tonight. And the facilities one, it is on September 23. It'll be our first meeting since April. And at that meeting, we plan to talk about all the things that we got accomplished this summer.
Very good. Thank you. Brian, Human Resources.
Yes, we met Thursday also before the board meeting, right before the finance meeting, I believe. And we went over the monthly personnel report, as well as a preview of the gating metrics presentation this evening. We also talked about our newly founded partnership with certain specialists. And we'll meet again in.
Sarah, you have, I think, one report?
I do, yes. Student life and teaching and learning don't meet until next week. But technology board advisory met on the 31st. And like Joelle, we welcomed new members. And one of the really exciting things is that we welcomed six students to the technology board advisory. So four of them were there. And we spent time reviewing the work that has happened over the course of the summer related to our technology assessment and the growth that has happened as a result of that report from a year ago, sharing out all of the work that the technology department has done in order to support virtual learning and the resources and the devices kids need to be successful in a virtual environment as well. And then went into breakout groups where we discussed feedback in general. What do families need? One of the things that came out of that conversation is, as you know, we're doing a parent speaker series. And the next, one of the next speaker series is what every parent needs to know about their iPad. So it's really trying to build capacity for our families as well as our students in terms of technology use as a focus. The other thing that was really exciting, I know in the breakout group that I was in, one of the developers of the co-pilot, which is our student help desk, was a part of that conversation. And so a lot of feedback was given about how to continue to develop that student-run site over the course of this year as the students create this, really from what was nothing previously. And then we set priorities for this next year and what we're going to work on in upcoming meetings.
Very good. We'll stick with you for 8.02, which is the ARC update.
All right, and Tony is going to share that on our screen. So I'm happy to share with you more about ARC, give you some further details about how it's been going. As you know, ARC, we designed this from nothing. It is our full virtual platform for families who knew that no matter what phases as a district we were in, they wanted to have their students learning in a remote environment this school year. So Tony, if you go to the next slide, I'm happy to share with you the participation of our students within ARC. As you can see, we have almost 1,200 elementary students. That's the equivalent of 36.5% of our elementary population who is in ARC. When you look at that and break it down by specific school, that ranges from about 27% of one elementary school to as high as 46% of one of our elementary schools. So it's really, we don't see a high level of consistency in all of our buildings, but there's definitely obviously priority in being in the ARC program. At middle school, we're at 35%, and then high school, it drops down to 24% of our students. Middle school, the range between the two middle schools, one middle school's at 32%, the other is at 39%. So that's how the balance of that has come out. And then, Tony, if you go to the next slide, I'll share, elementary has been, elementary is much more of a self-contained program as compared to the secondary. So their schedule is completely unique to the ARC program. Teachers are dedicated, well, classroom teachers, I should say, as well as specials. Teachers are dedicated teachers to the program, so they have a self-contained schedule that they're using. This is what we've been sharing with families. This is what people are getting used to in terms of what the school day looks like in elementary ARC. And then if you go to the next slide, Tony, talks about class sizes. So one of the things that we needed to do, what we prioritized is keeping our class sizes similar to what our staffing matrix is for our students who are in person. So at kindergarten level, that is 22 students in a class. And then it goes up incrementally by one student each grade level from there. These numbers are actually taken from about midweek last week. We've seen a little bit of shifting in ARC, and that's kind of been the pattern, where we have a couple of students come out of ARC and return to in-person learning. Today, we had a student who went into ARC. So it's shifting still, and it will continue to shift until that September 18 deadline, where we ask families to stay in the program that you're in, so we have that stability. But one of the things that was really purposeful with ARC is we thought that it was more likely that families would say this structure isn't working for our family, and we're more likely to move back to in-person. So that's why those class sizes are a little bit higher in being able to manage classroom management. And ARC in a virtual environment looks very different than it does in an in-person environment. So again, why you see a little bit of increase. You also notice the range of classrooms, when we start, our class sizes, when we started classes, they all stayed pretty much in the same vein. We were really creating the classes with a mix of kids from, our goal was two elementary schools were possible, and so that students knew approximately half of the students in their classes. We do have some anomalies where we have a class that is entirely one elementary school, and then we have a couple of situations where three elementary schools came together. But really trying to keep kids connected to peers that they would know, but also not skew the class sizes so much if a particular school was impacted by changes in ARC versus in-person learning. The other thing that's not included in these numbers is pegs. So we have about half of our pegged students are also in ARC. So we have two teachers at elementary who are in-person pegged teachers, and then two who are managing ARC. And that's not reflected in these particular numbers. If you can go to the next slide for me, Tony. So one of the things is class sizes are slightly larger. If we're looking at an average of about one student more than we typically would in an in-person environment, one of the things that's a priority for us is we have literacy teaching assistants, or LTAs, who support small group instruction and reading. Those LTAs are going to prioritize our ARC kindergarten through second-grade students. So actually, there will be an hour each day where our kindergarten, first, and second-grade students will have a dedicated LTA in their classroom. So that will help in that reduction of class size and getting more specific supports for our students. Those won't start until about a week and a half. Right now, our LTAs are doing a lot of assessment. In fact, today, our ARC first graders were doing their fast bridge screenings. So we get through that process first before we start to see our LTAs pushing into the classrooms. And then K5, we're really connecting more to our supports that are in the building. So counselors are staying connected with their students who reside within their own attendance zone. Now, that doesn't mean that counselors from a different school won't come in and do a lesson. But if I'm a student who has a need, or for instance, I might have a referral for special education, my own personal counselor from my homeschool would be the one who's managing that. The same with our ALL teachers. They are keeping their caseloads of students. Special School District is keeping their caseloads of students. That has made scheduling for Special School District very complicated and very challenging for our special education teachers. While I will say, everyone has done an incredible job with ARC and developing not just the instructional experiences for kids, but also the systems of ARC. Our SSD teachers are working really hard to juggle multiple platforms of students and where services are happening. Instructional design coaches are connected to ARC as well. Each has a grade level that they're supporting, so that they're really digging in and supporting those particular. And then, of course, we have a dedicated coordinator for elementary ARC in Doug Barton, which has been a huge help in getting professional learning streamlined, getting supports, a contact person for our families to go to directly, and someone who supports seamless communication as well. If you can move to the next slide. There's Doug. So there's Doug, actually, and the teachers are on the screen at that one. That was back when we were doing professional learning. So we've really been very cognizant of what the feedback is. We know this is new. And whenever there's something new that happens, there's going to be glitches. There are going to be issues where we need to, to use someone's favorite word, pivot, and make some adjustments to how the structure is going. But overall, I would say the feedback's been really positive. Families are appreciating the structure. They're appreciating how our teachers are doing such an excellent job of keeping kids engaged. I know I was sharing earlier that I was in some Zooms last week, and the kids and their movement, and how they are, you know, watching a screen of second graders, or first graders, or even fifth graders. It is definitely an active learning environment. And our teachers are doing a great job keeping kids engaged and supporting kids as they're working through really a lot of onboarding to tech tools that they haven't had to work with in the past. And so been really impressed by how seamless that is. And that is truly credit to our teachers and the hard work that they've done to grow their own knowledge and understanding of these programs, and then to help our kids be successful as well. If you can go to the next slide for me, Tony. All right, so when we get into middle school and high school, the schedule looks a lot different. Once you get to the secondary level, the idea of a self-contained ARC, while that would have been ideal, and that was what we had envisioned, the reality and the plans don't necessarily emerge in the same way. And that's because of the complexity of student schedules. So we've all seen the middle school schedule. We can go on to the next slide. I think the important thing to remember about the middle school schedule and the high school schedule is if in-person learning shifts from phase three to phase two, then the schedule for ARC will also shift, because our teachers are teaching both in an ARC environment and an in-person environment. So we have to make sure those classes don't overlap or have conflict. When we looked at scheduling secondary classes, really tried to keep dedicated ARC classes. And where we could, we absolutely did. So what you can see in the middle school here is that we do have dedicated ARC classes for core classes. And there are a few exceptions to that. If we have students who needed collaborative teaching environments because of their IEP, or they needed a self-contained classroom for special education because of their IP, those are singleton classes. So for them to have a self-dedicated ARC class was not going to be realistic. So right now, all of our students are in phase three, so it feels the same for everyone. When students who are in-person come back for phase two, there are going to be some classes, our elective classes and some of those specialized core classes, we will merge a virtual environment with an in-person environment. And we're really focused on how to do that well, so that our students who are virtual feel that sense of connection, feel like they are just as much a part of the class. And that's very intentional in our professional learning as we get into that next stage. You can see here also the class size ranges in these different classes. Again, it was a puzzle trying to put together all of this. So not all of our class sizes are right at that 28 mark, which would be our class size max for middle school. But they're in the range that is manageable, and our teachers are comfortable being able to do that. And then if you go on to the next slide, I can highlight where we are with high school. Again, very similar in terms of the schedule, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. And then, Tony, if you can go forward one more for me. Once we get to high school, it got even more complicated with schedules. There's over 500 courses in the high school program. So making dedicated ARC classes in the master schedule, and I say we, I shouldn't say me. I shouldn't say we. I did not do this. This was our high school principals. These were our administrative leaders at both middle school and high school, did an incredible job in conjunction with our counselors, trying to make these puzzles come together in a way that would really be workable. So when they first started and had every class a dedicated ARC class, they could not get out of the 25% feasibility of the schedule. That 25% of classes working does not work. We need to be at 100%. So they were really hitting a lot of barriers with that. So ended up moving to any course that would require two sections would get their own dedicated ARC course. And once that happened, it freed up the schedule to be workable, to be able to manipulate all of those other pieces. So we really wanted to prioritize student needs, to make sure students were getting the classes that were important to them. We didn't want to sacrifice and reduce class availability for students. And then, as a result, we ended up out of about 500 classes at the high school, 80 of those are dedicated ARC classes. What that means for freshmen and sophomores is that most of their classes are dedicated ARC classes. And like middle school, it's not until you get to more elective options where you see that merge happen between in-person and ARC. But once you get to the junior and senior level, where the number of core classes even diverges so much more, students as juniors and seniors may only have one or two dedicated ARC classes. And when high school students come back in person, they may find that they're in a virtual environment while students are in an in-person environment as well. And you can see there, we have the average class size of 23, and then the range of 16 to 32, just depending on the particular classes. And then I have one final slide, which is just a reminder that September 18 is the deadline to make any changes. What we've really said is this is not intended to be a revolving door. It's really meant to be, if ARC is not working for you, or if in-person is not working for you, you have the time to figure that out and then make the change into the program that's going to work for your family and for your children. So September 18 is that timeframe, and we're really watching it to see what the impact is in terms of class sizes, because that's an important component of just continuing to be successful.
All right. Thank you. Good report. I know that was, it's a monumental undertaking and a lot of moving parts. So thank you for that report. Eight point oh three.
I have a question.
Sorry.
I was just wondering how subs are working for the ARC program?
So when we started, our original plan was that teachers would have partner teachers. And so if I'm out, partner teachers would consolidate together. The reality is that we erode the learning experience when you've got 50 kids in a virtual environment. And especially the reality of what this truly looks like, being able to manage that and to keep kids engaged and connect to them is really not practical. The challenge in a, in a virtual environment is that everything is behind a password. Canvas is behind a password. That's where the entirety of the course structure is being held. Even if substitutes had access to Zoom, which is likely, they can't walk kids through and support kids in the Canvas environment. Without having access to information that is ultimately going to give them too much control. And have an in, you know, an entrance and an exit on a regular basis. The management of that is not practical. So what we've done instead is we have, and elementary is where we were most concerned about it. At the secondary level, the idea of asynchronous learning, teachers can make videos, share those out. It's only a period a day. Elementary is where we were more concerned about a full day. How do we, how do we make that work? So we've been very intentional in planning this, that asynchronous learning would be developed each week. So that scope and sequence wouldn't get lost if we have to have a student who's not our teacher, who's not able to teach that day. But it's really not something that feasibly a sub can come in and manage that platform. So the expectation is that the scope and sequence is still in play. So that what students are doing on an asynchronous learning day, because their teacher cannot provide instruction that day, still fits and is aligned with their work. And that it has that high quality of learning experience. You're welcome.
Tara, was there, was there a need at the high school level to enroll students into the launch program on Springfield Little?
No, once we got to the point where we realized it wasn't going to be like, oh, here's an area here or here's an area there. It really did not make sense. Universally, parents want their children with Lindbergh teachers and Lindbergh curriculum. So once we knew that we were going to have to have these merged classes of ARC and in-person, it didn't make any sense to use launch. And quite honestly, launch got to a point, I know I've been hearing from other districts recently, they're not accepting any more students. They, they really meet, reached their max capacity as well. So it was better for us that we were able to manage it in-house.
Tara, question?
I keep, I keep muting and unmuting myself. I'm just going to keep it unmuted for a while.
Sorry about that. I should have hit the raise hand button on it.
You're fine. I wouldn't have been late.
Okay. So you, you made reference to the middle school and the high school schedules. And obviously even with some more singleton courses and things like that, the advanced placement, whatnot, you know, along the way. So it, are we going to provide those teachers with a little bit more technology when they're doing both things?
Yeah. So one of the things that, and we have not started this conversation yet. So let me clarify that. One of the things that is really important is that when you design instruction for students, when you have both virtual and in-person, you need to start by designing it for the virtual students. Because if you design it for in-person, what you're going to end up having is just students sitting on the background, watching what's happening and not feeling connected or engaged. Or saying, oh, what did they say? I can't hear that. So it's really about being intentional in instructional design when we get to the point where we're actually having that merge of students in a virtual environment and an in-person one.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. I'm going to mute myself.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll move to eight point oh three, which is the gating metrics presentation. Dr. McKinney.
Okay. Tony, we'll share the slideshow. And this is really what we hope will be a conversation. There's been a great deal of conversation about what kind of metrics, what kind of data people track, what would trigger opening versus closing, that kind of thing. And I think the, the answer is that it's really not a single piece of data. It's a lot of data that you build and you use to give you really information about a very nuanced kind of situation here. So if you have questions along the way here, please jump in and ask. There are some slides here. There's some data that needs some explaining, others is pretty, is pretty self-explanatory. I know Dr. Lake will be commenting as well during this presentation.
So let me go ahead and, yeah, so what you all are going to see tonight is a work. We've been working with our county health department and we've been asking for months, I think, I guess, I would say. You know, what is it that we need to be looking at? What is it? Can you say to us, schools use this as a guide? We've had some decent conversations, but when you look across our country, you look at places like Minnesota, you look at places like California, Nebraska, Kansas. Different states have given their schools, they've said here from their health professionals in that state have said, here's schools, this is what you need to be using. It's not a black and white decision, but this is a guide for you to be thinking, oh, you know what, over the last two weeks. And again, when we look at data, it's really important that it's a snapshot in time of two weeks. It's not that we look at something, we, we trigger a positive metric and boom, we trigger another phase. I mean, it is a, it is a process for us to do. And when we walk you through some matrix tonight and some data, you're going to kind of look that we're going to use some colors. And we're looking at one piece of data point and we have three that we really focus on. We might be, I think right now, two of them were in the orange, which is pushing up to red. And then we have one that I think is kind of solid in, in the yellow, which is a little more, you know, that, that's, that's good. So I just want you to know that's where this has come from. It's been a lot of work, us internally, as well as Ed Plus, which is our consortium. There's a gentleman by the name of Matt Goodman, who now recently has been meeting not only with the health department, but he's also working with a group of physicians that are a task force, re-entry school task force. And having conversations around them, you know, other things that you're going to see tonight that we finally got for the first time this week is, you know, they've been reporting out cases in an age span of 10 years. We wanted it in five years. I wanted, we wanted to know what zero to four looks like. What does five to 10 or five to nine look like? What does 10 to 14 look like? What does 15 to 19 look like? We're finally starting to get some of that data, which helps us. Because as we've learned in this research, it, this virus acts differently depending on what age you are. And so Brian's kind of our point person on it with me. I'm very entrenched in this conversation. But Brian is in the day-to-day operations of monitoring our data with our school district and working with our lead nurse, Jessica Franklin, which you all know is a new position that we were planning to hire prior to COVID anyways. And so we luckily we have her and so Brian's kind of our sitting expert on this right now. And so, but him and I are working closely on this. So any questions before we jump into that? I just wanted to kind of frame where this, how we've gotten to this point in this conversation. Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay. Well, next slide, please. And I appreciate the term expert, but I think generating is just enough information and knowledge to be dangerous. So I will go from there. These are the data that we track every single day. There's a hard spreadsheet that I did not run in this presentation. Not really helpful to see it just in raw data, but it's something we enter into each day and then we're able to pick out the information we need. So we track the transmission rate. We'll show you all this data here in a minute. We track St. Louis County positivity rate. The transmission rate comes from the Health State Department. County positivity rate comes from the St. Louis Department of Public Health. We track new cases per 100,000 people in St. Louis County. That's a key metric. So when you see a number, it may look small, but that's per every 100,000. That's been provided to us from Ed Plus through a variety of sources. There are uses. Data from St. Louis University as well, St. Louis Public Health Department. We track our cases per 100,000 in our six Lindbergh zip codes, as well as three to four of ours, so we'll look at nine zip codes. And then we look at Lindbergh Schools data and you likely saw the dashboard go up today with this data. And that's our number of students who tested positive at the time of reporting, students in quarantine and St. Louis staff. Next slide, please. So the transmission rate that we mentioned, the key number here, as it's been explained to me, is one point oh. So one point oh is neutral. It means that a virus, whether it's the flu or this, or COVID-19, is neither spreading, neither is decreasing. So everything under one is good, everything above one is going the wrong direction. So you can see that this, this data range, we started tracking this back around the middle of July. It was very hot, it was spiking after the Fourth of July, the county, as you probably read it up. And so for some time it was 1.6. Then we had actions taken through, you know, mask mandates and various things. Significant drop, went down to 0.86. And now it's crept up, up to 0.96 and now it's currently at 1.01. So there's a little bit of wobble. It's getting very high, significant dip and now it's crept up just a little bit. But again, anything around one, one is good. There are five regions in the state that state tracks. So when you see this number, we're really talking about that with St. Louis County, but we're talking about St. Charles and Jefferson, Franklin and our neighboring counties. So this is a region, we're a region seed. If you ever go on the website, you can do the same for yourself. Missouri, health.misouri.gov, mo, healthmo.gov. And you check the transmission rate, that's our region group. Next slide, please. Another piece of data we track is the county positivity rate. That's currently 7.6%. That's, we look at that, this is updated on a daily basis, but it always looks back seven days. You can see this, this chart goes all the way back to March and our first reported cases of COVID-19. You can see the journey that we've taken. Again, that spike in mid-July and the intervention and then it's starting to creep back down. So this, this number has been below 10, as you can see there, for, since, since about the middle of July. Next slide, please. So I talked about zip code tracking. So this map is what we use every single day. And when you click on, Tony says, I'm super quiet. Am I super quiet? Do I need to turn something up, Tony? Speak up if I can. Okay. This map is interesting in that you can click on a zip code and it'll open up a box and you can fill out information about that zip code. Generally look at it and use it as a quick color dashboard.
Brian, are you muted? I think they said you're actually muted.
Is that better, Tony? Yes. Okay. This next, this next slide really has the zip codes. And when you click on each zip code, it'll open up a box and shows you very specific information, exactly how many cases cumulative, how many cases per 100,000 people. But then more quickly, you can look at it with the colors and the darker the, the purple, the more widespread cases have been. So you can get kind of a quick idea, but what we do each day is we click on one of these zip codes, six of, set, nine of them actually, the three bordering us and our six. And then we track that data. Next slide, please. Here's just a zoomed in version of that and superimposed is our district boundary. It's the one right in the middle. So you can see that dark, darker shade of purple right now is where a lot of our transmissions happening. And it's moved around a little. Zip codes have taken their turns being the ones darker in purple color. But right now, as of when this PowerPoint was put together late, late last week, that was our kind of main area of focus. Next slide, please. New cases per 100,000 people in St. Louis County. Again, I mentioned that this is another piece of data we track. Ed Plus has provided this information on a daily basis for us and it's been very helpful. We've looked at some metrics, as Dr. Lake mentioned, other states gating, gating, gating metrics charts. And what a lot of them have in common is over 20 is, is significant and under 20 is, is better. And you can see from July 20th to September 3rd, that's been our, our journey. That mid-July high point and then coming down and then just here recently started to creep back up a little bit. But I can add to today, after the publishing of this, it's back down under 20 now. Today it was down at 17 point something. I can't remember, but 17. So if you were to continue to watch this chart as we will, you'd see it go back down under that 20 line as of September 8th. Next slide, please. Here's a very, a very illustrative chart. So Dr. Lake referred to the county's ability now to break this down by age groups and, and five years at a time. And if you look at the pink line at the very top, that is our 15 to 19 year olds. Everybody else, four and up is kind of all along the same lines there, down under 10. But that is a stark contrast in case numbers. And so.
Brian, I'd just like to jump in and I hate to give him any credit publicly, but today Dr. Hamby made a really, really good point. He said, you know, I just wondered what it would look like if it was 15 to 17. If we, and so I'm going to go back to the county and I'm going to push or the medical group of doctors that maybe has access to this information. And can we start looking at it 15 to 17 because of those 18 and 19 year olds at universities? Are they the ones that are necessarily driving that number? So that's again, we're trying to really drill down so we can really say, really, how is this a virus affecting our community as a whole? But more specifically, how is it interacting within our kids, in our schools and in our community? So again, that was something that Dr. Hamby had brought up tonight, which was a really, really good point. So go ahead, Brian.
And if you've seen on the news, I mean, Mizzou asked kids not to travel this, this week. So college-age students are a focus right now, certainly. Next slide. And our current conditions here in Lindbergh, and this is straight off our, off of our dashboard, but you could see. Positive cases for our elementary students. And I, there's one thing I want to qualify about this. This is not cumulative. So you, we're not suggesting that since March, we've had one student that was to ever test positive for COVID. This is a snapshot at this moment. It says as of 9/8. So we're looking at this a week at a time and then we're taking a snapshot and we're updating the, the data. So as of today, right now, we've got one case ECE grades, ECE through grade five. So that'd be all of our elementary schools plus the early childhood center. And then our secondary students, none of which are in session right now, we've got two identified positive cases. And then, I'm sorry, that was, yeah, a number of students. And then under quarantine, that number gets higher, of course, because one, if one person is around other people, other people have to take those measures. And so elementary, we've got 11 students under quarantine and then grade six through 12, we have 24. I can tell you that, that is almost exclusively high school, the 24 quarantine students. And then if you, there's the link there and all of these links are, are hot links. And so this will be published on our website and you can always go back and click these links and go to these places where we're pulling our data. Next slide, please. Same thing with staff, same, same qualification as earlier about it's a snapshot. And you can see EC in elementary, no teachers testing positive at this point, at this moment. Middle and high school too, and then district and support staff, we have to pull that out because there are people that don't necessarily serve in a school building. We have one and then you can see our quarantine numbers there as well. Next slide, please. So Dr. Lake asked that we research what other states are doing, how are they determining what gating criteria they'll use to make decisions about school safety? These are some examples of what we've looked at. The Harvard Global Health Institute is really a, a great site. They give you not only what their recommendations are, what your data should tell you, but they also then recommend even further what that means, how schools should look, what social distancing should look like. And so we've linked that in there for you to click on and, and look over and we'll see some shots of it here in just a moment. We also pull out of the Harvard Global Institute site, St. Louis County. And they look at St. Louis County as a whole and then kind of place us on their gating criteria. And then finally, there's an article from this institute that we, that we put in there for you to see also at the time that you've got some time to look at this, that really talks about the path to zero and school safety. Next slide, please. So here's a screenshot. This is from Harvard Global Institute. Again, this is their color coding that they use and you can see what the colors mean. They are not, again, black and white, because this is the simple thing. So they've listed things in, in terms of priority. So I certainly am not going to read all the words on this slide. It's a screenshot. But first priority for reopening, you can see grades pre-K through five. This is at the orange level. You'll see that's how they have us categorized. If we were going to use their, their recommendations, they have St. Louis. They have St. Louis County as an orange status. So, second priority for reopening, grade six through eight. And then, they do not recommend opening grades nine through 12 at this time, but keeping that a remote learning scenario. And then you can read through all of those colors when you have time. Next slide. And here's, here's St. Louis County, just a screenshot from their, their website that shows our status. Next slide. So, working with Beth and Dr. Lake, we have developed a gating criteria document for our district based on a lot of others, the states that Dr. Lake mentioned, and then largely the Harvard Global Institute, because that one just provides so much information. And you can see what our criteria that we're considering and, and having discussions around. If you take our data in the positive test rate, daily new cases and transmission rate, if you were to take us and plug us into these, as Dr. Lake mentioned just a few minutes ago, in the positive test rate, we'd be in the yellow, and in the daily new cases and transmission rate, we'd be in the orange. So, two out of three in the orange. And then you can see where we're using a lot of the language from Harvard Global Institute, that orange status, again, the priorities for reopening. They also mention not only grade levels, but they also talk about when you should bring back special education, special services, that kind of thing. So, this is a document that's been developed here in the last few days, and we've certainly got our sources down there at the bottom to, to let people know what expert material we're using. Next slide. Now, just discussion and questions, thank you for your time.
Any questions? It's a lot of data, a lot to go through, but. No questions?
As you look at it, if you do have questions, anytime, call me, email me. Dr. Lake, of course, is entrenched in this as well, and Beth gets to be the other person that gets to see a lot of this, go back and forth. And so, I think the three of us probably spend the most time with it, but feel free to call us anytime.
Thank you, that's a lot to go over.
You go ahead.
Well, I mean, it's just a comment more than a, a question, but just thank you. Because I know that there's a lot of parents, a lot of employees, and a lot of people will be on their own data finding mission, and they'll have a study that'll say this versus that versus that. There has to be a judgment call, there has to be all this compiled, and so I appreciate you all doing that. There has to be all this, like this, because this is also very easy and one chart to understand and to explain to a lot of people, including the kids. You know, I kind of look at this chart and you're thinking, I'm a middle school student, I can look at this and be like, okay, all right, this is when, this is what I can do to get back. This is what I can do. So, I really appreciate it, it's very simple, easy to follow, and thank you for doing the dashboard too, Beth.
Brian, why don't you talk about your committee before I make some comments, and if there's other questions too?
So, just a committee to look to review this data on a weekly basis. We're going to have some high school students on it. We will definitely have representation from the Board of Education, our teacher leaders, Rich Flores and Carrie Turek and Timothy Lombardo. If you're watching out there, you're going to hear from me very soon, I'm surprising the three of them with this. We've got some administrators on this, we've got Dr. Charney, who you've all heard about and probably been, served on committees with, has agreed to be a part of it, Jessica Franklin will be a part of it. So, and we'll have some parents as well from each level. So, and really, just a weekly jump on a Zoom for a little bit and say, here's where the data went this, here's where the, you know, the numbers went this week, and what could it mean? And, you know, and, and just to, so more people are in the loop on this data rather than just the three of us, so.
And, and here's what I'll say to that, this, the transparency piece. And I know some of our parents have been a little frustrated with, what are you looking at, what are you looking at? Well, again, back to my opening comments, you know, we've been pushing and trying to get it from, you know, people here locally, and it's just been, you know, it's been a little bit, again, it's not that we haven't been in conversations, weekly conversations, but getting some movement on that. And what I would say is, and I'm not going to speak for all the other St. Louis County districts, but, you know, those three data points, I would say at some point, all of them will look at that to a certain degree. I think, you know, we may be the first ones in the county to come up, go ahead and say, this is what we're going to do. Now, St. Charles County has done it, their health department has given their schools like a dashboard, kind of like what we created, and Jefferson County has done that as well. And so, you know, we're moving forward. Matt, like I said, I referenced Matt Goodman from Ed Plus, he's the one. And I know Pattonville is going to be very entrenched, very similar, will be a little bit different. But I would say for the most part, when schools are looking at this, this is going to be, we've, all of us 20-some, 22 superintendents have tried to be somewhat together on things. As you know, Jennings, I believe, in Normandy has a few kids in, in their buildings. But, you know, we all, we do as well, we're one of the few in South County and West and Central County that actually have kids in the building. And so, when you look at what you saw tonight, and you look at our data, and you look at the colors, you know, we're in conversations about, okay, how do we get more kids back into our buildings right now? You know that, that's an ongoing weekly update, you know, that we give you guys through a Friday packet or whatever it is, and that, you know, decisions to bring kids in and out, very much like a snow day, is an administrative type of decision. We just, you know, want you to have the information, know what we're doing, why we're doing it, making sure you guys understand decisions that are being made and all of that as well. And so, so as you look at that, as you guys know, as we've been updating you over the last couple of weeks, you know, making plans to try to get more students, especially some more of our younger learners back into our, our buildings here in the near future, so. Questions?
It looks really thought out, like it's not just a few people, so it's a larger group, different brains in the room. And then beyond that, it's beyond our four walls. So, I like that. I'm hoping that everyone will feel comfort in that and, and feel comfort in the data that you've collected and continue to. I think it's really well thought out, so, good job.
And that goes back to how we've tried to lead you as your seven board members and this administrative team. More people know what we're doing, the better off we all are, right? Sometimes it takes a little time to make sure we have the right information to get it out there and make it transparent. But once we get it, that's why we have more advisory committees, that's why we're soliciting the experts in our community to help guide us. Because like we talked about, you know, decisions can't be made in silos, nor will they be, you know, under this leadership right now. It will not be done in silence, so. Is that it?
All right.
Awesome.
Thank you, thank you both. Okay, we'll move to 9.0, which is actions items by consent. Under that, we have items 9.01 to 9.09. So, I ask if anyone would like to remove any of those items for consideration, individual consideration. Okay, hearing none, may I have a motion to approve action items 9.01 through 9.09 as presented by consent?
So moved.
Motion by Kristi, second by Jennifer. Okay, any discussion, questions?
I did have one question on 9.09 contracts. Joelle, I understand the construction part. Talk about the Lindbergh Community Ed, how we're partnering with them. It was, it was nice to see there was a school and a little medical school, talk a little bit about that.
He's got a campaign going on for, 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 let them know, different agencies we're working with through community ed. Programs that they're offering now, most of them are virtual, but this is relationship to the head, it's not for the information to the board to see how many people are working with the community.
Okay, so this wasn't the first time we saw this?
Yeah, it was.
Okay.
It's not in practice, but that part of the board, you see what they're working with. So, it creates a sense of all the organizations that kind of cross the apple flowers and people.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote then. Mike Shamia, yes? Karen Schuster?
Yes.
She's.
Karen out there?
She said, I saw her.
Thumbs up, all right, we got a thumbs up, all right. Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristy Watts?
Yes.
Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Mike Tischels?
Yeah.
And Kathy LeRenz?
Abstain because of a family member, it's a part of the consent agenda.
Okay. So, the motion passes 6-0 for the record. 10.0 individual action items, we have none this month. 11.0 reports, in 11.03, we have the first reading of review of 17 board policies. So, if you have any questions regarding those policies, I think it's directed to you, Brian. Okay, Dr. McKen, McKinney, if we have any questions regarding those items. 12.0 citizen comments regarding non-agenda items. Again, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on non-agenda items. But at this time, we ask that you email any comments to boe@lindberghschools.ws, and we will respond in writing following this meeting. And again, we hope to be back in person, or plan to be back in person in October at a location to be determined. So, given that, we'll move to 13.0, which is recess. We already conducted our executive session, so we'll move to 16.0 adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn meeting 1517?
Second.
Motion by Kathy, second by Jennifer, this is always a roll call vote, so Mike Shamia, yes? Karen Schuster?
Yes.
Thumbs up, that's a yes. Matt Alonso?
Yes.
Kristy Watts? Jennifer Miller?
Yes.
Mike Tischels?
Yeah.
Kathy LeRenz?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for joining.